There we go.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this school board meeting for Independent School District 624. Before that, I asked the clerk to read the role. I'm going to ask Dr. Kazmicek has a short statement that he'd like to read. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. K.
All right. Thank you, Chair Mullen. So live captioning is available for tonight's meeting. Find the link to the live captioning at the board meeting on, link on the district's online calendar listing or directly at ISD624.org/Feb8Meeting. And we'll leave this screenshot up for a bit if you need to access it. That's it, Don.
Thank you, Dr. Kazmicek. I will now ask the clerk to please read the role.
Newmaster. Present. Thompson.
Here.
Arcand.
Here.
Bloyd. Absent Chapman.
Here.
Ellison, here. Mullen.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. So that it doesn't sound like a bunch of people reciting the pledge. What I'll ask is that if you're able to, please stand. And then I would ask Dr. Kazmicek to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would ask everybody else to leave your mics on mute. Thank you. Dr. Kazmicek.
And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Kazmicek. Before us this evening, we have, we have an agenda. And I would ask for an approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Oh.
Trifecta.
So the one I heard was Dr. Newmaster, and then I heard a second from Mr. Chapman, if that's all right. Any discussion here, hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote. Would ask the clerk to please read the role.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcand.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Ellison, aye. Mullen.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all very much. We have an agenda. Also before us tonight, we have our consent agenda. These are sundry items that we go through month to month, check registry, other things. But the one thing that I continue to be amazed by and grateful for is the generosity of the community and the donations that are are given to the school district. So with that, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Arcand. This will require a roll call vote. Would ask clerk to please read the role.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcand.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Ellison, aye. Mullen.
Aye. And we have our consent agenda is approved. Thank you all very much. We are now at the point of our meeting for public forum. We ask that if you have a comment that you can email it to the district, it will be read at our meeting. Also, I know that Dr. Kazmicek is at the district center and is able to take public comment. Dr. Kazmicek, is there anybody in there that would like to address the board?
No, there is no one here, and there are no comments. There were no comments submitted either.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now then move on to our first informational item, C1, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. K.
All right. Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. All right. White Bear Lake area students are thoroughly enjoying February's I Love to Read Month celebrations and activities. Throughout the month, students will enjoy reading-based, reading-based activities. And I would like to especially acknowledge our families, school board members, and other community members who continue to participate in February's reading activities in our schools, which do, of course, look different this year than they have in the past. An example of the fun can be found on this slide with Humphrey the Hamster and Aug the Frog visiting Birch Lake Elementary last Friday to see the students off at the end of the school day. The following celebrations are being recognized in February, February's Black History Month. We have National School Counseling Week. Today is National African American Parent Involvement Day. President's Day is coming up in a week. There's no school that day on Monday, February 15th, and district offices are closed. National PTA Founder's Day on February 17th and February 22nd through the 26th is School Board Recognition Week. And in honor of School Board Recognition Week, we hope you all enjoy special Bear She's Bars that will soon be coming your way in appreciation of your efforts on behalf of our students and families. So what makes up a Bear She's Bar, you might be asking yourself. Coincidentally, the ingredients are reflective of the characteristics of our board members. Thoughtful, accountable, open, representative voice, good-willed, conscientious, fiscally responsible, supportive, and proud. And thank you all for your service. So Teacher of the Year Committee is proud to recognize the over 600-plus educators of White Bear Lake area educators local number 7286 as this year's honorary teachers of the year. Additionally, please join us in celebrating the professional excellence of the 2021-22 class of nominees, which also includes all nominees who submitted teacher surveys as part of the 2020-2021 selection process. From that process, six finalists will be selected to be interviewed with members of the community administration and fellow teachers. Congratulations, nominees, and also thank you to all of our educators who continue to serve our students and families this school year. Please remember to dress warmly on these cold winter days. The White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation, Through the Closet, has jackets, mittens, hats, and scarves available for district families in need. Should you know any families that could benefit from the generosity of our community, please contact the closet at closetwblaef@gmail.com. Members of our foundation and other volunteers will then contact the family and make confidential arrangements to help those who do not already have warm clothes. Those families who have cold weather items to donate are invited to contact the White Bear Lake Area Education Foundation at 651-407-7696. All right, and now it's time for our student liaison update. Jennifer Adams, are you, are you ready for that? All right. I don't know if Jennifer's on. Benan, you don't happen to have a report? Okay, all right. Interrupt me if I moved on too quickly. And then now just a brief COVID-19 update. So this is a friendly reminder that this Friday, February 12th, which was originally scheduled as a non-school day, is now a school day. In-school learning will take place for our elementary students on that day, and it will be an at-home learning day for middle school, high school, and distance learning academy students. The revised 2020-21 K-12+ district calendar was approved at the September 14th board meeting to make up for early September days originally scheduled as school days. The final day that has switched to a school day is Monday, April 5th. Students in grades three through five switched to in-person learning a week ago, so it has been fun to have a complete set of students in our elementary buildings again. Our elementary distance learning academy is going strong as well. And we will be switching to hybrid 2.0 learning model for grades six through 12 on February 22nd. Principals have been in contact with our middle school and high school families with additional information. All right, with that, Chair Mullen, I am, I'm with my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kazmicek. Are there any questions regarding the superintendent's report? Is there any questions? Okay, hearing or seeing none, we will move on to our first discussion item. As you all know, and I just want to make sure that the public knows, we have a policy committee. That policy committee, from time to time, reviews policies inside of the district and brings them to the school board for a process which goes the first month for the first reading, and then they will come back, answer questions, and come back the following month for the second reading. So this month, we have several questions that I apologize, I just got a note. Jessica, did you have a question regarding the superintendent's report?
Yes, if that's okay. I just, and I'm not sure if we're going to talk about this later, Dr. Kazmicek, but I wonder if there's an update on vaccine rollout in the district?
Yeah, Vanessa, I believe, is on. She wants to talk a little bit about that. I could give a high-level update as well, but Vanessa, are you prepared for the answer to that one?
I can, I can definitely try. I think it is going to be a high-level answer on my end as well because we, it's kind of just moved on to being an MDE process. And then the update today was that that then moved on again to being a local public health effort. So the vaccines are going to get allocated to local public health. You, the whole, pretty much the whole team of school nurses in White Bear have been trained on how to be vaccinators for our teachers and school staff. So we're just waiting to hear when we can start signing up to do those vaccine clinics.
Yeah, and I would just add that we have been, thanks to Vanessa and other nursing staff, we, and I have also been in contact with our local public health officials. And we've encouraged and offered, and in fact, no, we're a willing partner in the effort to get staff vaccinated. And so whatever that would take, we would be, we were there to help with logistics. And I, I guess it was half joking, but really it was serious. I asked a couple of public health officials last week, who I had a conversation with, that I guarantee if they sent me 500 vaccinations a week to my office, I would guarantee they would get them in the arms of our educators and other staff very expeditiously based because we have people who can do that. And, and they know that, and that isn't too far-fetched from perhaps where the, what direction we're headed. And so the fact that it's moved to local public health officials is probably a good thing as we consider, you know, as we, as we hope to get all of our employees vaccinated. It seems like once it's come to more of a local approach, it's gone more smoothly in counties where that's been the case.
Great. Thank you.
I just, and then I apologize to Ms. Ellison for not seeing her hand up. I just want to let, remind everybody, for me, I got a small window of, of people that I can see. So that if, if you have a question or want to make a comment, please unmute yourself and say something. If I don't call on you before I move on, that way I can make sure that all the questions get answered. So I apologize again for that, Ms. Ellison, and we will go back to our first discussion item, D1, which is the first reading of several school board policies. So Policy 408, subpoena of school district employees. Policy 413, harassment and violence. Policy 414, mandated reporting on child neglect and physical and sexual abuse. Policy 419, tobacco-free environment. Policy 524, electronic technologies. Policy 806, crisis management. And Policy 809, naming school building or facilities. Are there any questions, comments regarding the policies that are up for their first reading? Okay.
Don.
Dr. Newmaster.
I read the, the last one twice, just with pleasure, thinking that we're going to have new buildings to name. So that, that was like, yeah, we might be using this one. This one is not a negative. This is a positive. So that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Thompson, did you have a question?
I do. I actually have a couple of questions. So I'm wondering if I, what's the best way to do it?
So the best way for you, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was going to say that if you can name the policy where you're at, and if you can name the page and the section, name the policy number first, name the page and the section, it'll give everybody a couple of seconds to get there. That way we can all follow along with your questions and concerns.
Okay, and then the first one is on 413.
Okay.
Page three, section six.
Okay.
So I just finished taking a course, an art course, actually, and my professor went by they/them pronouns. So I have a little bit more knowledge on gender identity and how we should or should not be using certain terminology. And I think we do an excellent job. And I also just want to say that the people that go through our policies, the team, it's amazing, and there's so much stuff that you guys have to go through that. I'm sure little things always just slip through, but in there, we use one's biological maleness and femaleness. So in a way, we're gender identifying individuals based on gender issues that they would not identify as. So somebody who is non-binary or gender non-conforming would not use the term male or female when referring to themselves or their biology at all. So maybe something, we, I think we do a really good job of trying not to use gender identity in our policies, like person, persons. I see a lot of that in there, which is good. And I'm not sure if this is something, if we have somebody who would be able to go through it and look for these gender terms and make sure we're using the appropriate gender terminology. And then on page four, in section two, letter C.
Of the same policy?
Yes. Where we say unwelcome sexually motivated or inappropriate. And then it goes on to say what the contact would be, and then it says, other than necessary restraint by teachers, administrators, or other school district personnel to avoid a physical harm to the persons or property. I know this might be reaching it, but does that possibly leave it open for something to happen? And then the employee could say, or the person causing the harm to the person could use, well, it was an accident, or I didn't mean to touch them there because I was, I just wonder if that, I think that, that it would get the point across without that being in there, but I don't. So these are things that, questions I have, but maybe they're better answered, I guess, outside of the board meeting. And I'm sorry, I didn't have time to call and discuss it with Wayne prior to the meeting.
Dr. Kazmicek?
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly revisit this with the policy committee, and I guess that would be probably the appropriate thing to do. Let's hear it. Tim, do you have any thoughts on that? Do you think that would probably be the appropriate approach?
I'd be happy to just speak quickly to this one, to both of these. And so, yeah, that's certainly a discussion that we can have and more than happy to. And I certainly welcome that. If you would like to reach out and find a time to chat outside of this, I think the one consideration that I do just want to point out there is that, especially with some of our policies, like a harassment policy, for instance, we're often drawing directly from language in statute. And even if it's not the language that we would necessarily prefer, we don't want to create a situation in which we're contradicting the statutory terminology or language there. So I just want to kind of, you know, say in general, that's something that often causes some of that friction within our policies. So we know in these instances, you know, these are terms of art that are utilized within state and federal statute, which is why the, you know, the gender pronouns have been, have been selected the way, in the way that they have.
Okay, and that makes sense. See, and I missed a conversation, I guess I could have asked had I had time to reach out ahead of time. So like if we use, then on page five, section four, A, we use he/she in the first couple of, we start with any person, and then we use he/she. And I guess I kind of have similar questions on policy 414 then, which is the next one, so.
Yeah, so, you know, again, what I would say there generally is, I think the way that we want to approach these is with a consistent philosophy as a district. And so where we, where we can continue to improve with our, with the language in our policies, applying a consistent, you know, philosophy, I think that's always really helpful. And we try to do that in a lot of different areas. And so I think that's something that we can, you know, continue to keep an eye on, is how are we making those references within all of our policies? And then just knowing too and being cognizant of the idea that sometimes we may need to, you know, kind of go back to the statutory foundational language there, but where we have the choice that we're, that we're applying a consistent philosophy. So, you know, I think that that's certainly something that we can do and will continue to try to do here.
Oh, yeah. Great, thank you. And I think we do a wonderful job. It's not a, it's just something I noticed, and I thank you for clarifying that. And that, you know, that makes sense that we have to use certain language in there. There were just a couple of things that I had, that caught my attention, and especially working on our equity team right now, it was just something that I, I wanted to ask about. So thanks for explaining it a little better. That was it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Are there other, any other questions regarding school, these school board policies?
I just want to add one little more stone to what Angela said. I would agree with her, and that did kind of hit me when I read through those two because they're not, it's often changed in things. So even though we based it on precedent, as, as Matthew's talking about, you know, previous legislation or laws, they're all changing too. So our consistency is important. And if by saying he/she, you're eliminating or making it more selective, who's protected, I think it's, it wouldn't be a bad thought to, for the policy committee to see a way through to be more inclusive and more with the times. Thanks.
And I'll just want to jump in, I'm sorry, Chair Mullen. I just wanted to jump in here, just appreciate all of these comments and let everyone know that these are also discussions that we do have on the policy committee about how to make our policies more inclusive. And I often rely on Mr. Mons's expertise of law and statute. And so thank you for these, and just know that these are continuing to be things that we talk about in our policy meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Ellison. Are there, are there any other comments or questions regarding the policies up for first reading? Okay, it sounds like that these policies will come back for a second reading next month. And unless I missed anybody, if we, we will now move to our second discussion item, the Youth Development Plan update. Is this Mr. Maurer?
It is, Chair Mullen. Thank you. Chair Mullen, members of the board, Dr. Kazmicek. As part of our youth enrichment and youth development program areas, we have the eligibility to access levy funds per Minnesota statute. And as part of that statute to be, to receive those funds, you do have to have a youth development plan in place. And that plan has recently been updated. And with me tonight is Tracy Cook, our youth development and youth enrichment specialist. And she's here to provide a brief update to the board in regards to our updated youth development plan that was approved by our advisory council last month. Tracy.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Good evening, everybody. My name is Tracy Cook, and thank you for welcoming me to the scoreboard meeting this evening. I wanted to take this opportunity to highlight a new youth development plan recently approved by the Community Services and Recreation Advisory Council. So the necessity of a youth development plan is defined by Minnesota Statute 124D. And this states that youth service revenue should be used to implement a youth development plan as part of a community education program. Our department mission is to connect and engage individuals and the community in lifelong learning and enrichment. And Community Services and Recreation receives approximately $63,000 in youth development levy funds and is utilizing these to accomplish the youth development plan by identifying the following priorities. So offering dynamic, diverse, and culturally responsive programming to meet students' academic and social emotional needs, identify and address barriers to participation, and foster collaborative partnerships to enhance student engagement. So these priority areas have been established as part of the ongoing district and community services strategic plans. And much of this work is already taking place. However, youth development plans, a youth development plan enables us to identify the current needs of our youth, to create unique opportunities to expand their learning, and it holds us accountable to that, to our community members as well, to ensure that we're being fiscally responsible with those dollars. As part of our youth development plan, we offer an array of opportunities already, such as after-school, summer, weekend, and non-school day programs. We also offer many scholarship opportunities. We participate in Youth Day at the Capitol to learn about the legislative process for our middle and high school students. We have internships and employment opportunities, a service learning partnership with school-age care, an avid partnership to offer leadership for our middle school students, and continuing to support our eighth to ninth grade transition program at North Campus each summer. And then most recently, by purchasing and implementing second step, a social-emotional program designed specifically to meet the, the needs of youth in out-of-school-time programs. And then beginning this fall, we will also be offering many grants for district staff to enhance service learning opportunities in the classroom through an application process. So I appreciate the, the opportunity to share this information with you about the youth development plan, and I'll open it up to any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Is there questions regarding the Youth Development Plan update? All right. Appreciate the work you guys are doing. I think it's great stuff. And am I missing, like I said, I can only see a small window. Dr. Kazmicek, you probably can see more there. Am I missing anybody?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you all very much. We appreciate your work. Do you guys have anything else you'd like to present?
No, I think that just about ramps it up.
Thank you very much, both. And we will now move on to our first operational item, E1, which is the action on approving the annual resolution directing the administration to make recommendations and reductions in programs and positions and reasonable thereafter. Mr. Mons.
So this is an annual resolution that we bring to the board. And this is the resolution that allows us the ability to make teacher staffing reductions for our continuing contract staff. This doesn't necessarily mean that we will be making those reductions, which is why it's an annual resolution. But this is the resolution that would allow us to do that in the case that there would be need. Even in any given school year, just due to shifts in student choice as they move through the registration process, this is something that can come into play. Certainly this year, there will be a little bit more attention paid in this area as we are going to be going through some fairly significant budget reductions. But this is part of our, our standard process in terms of moving through the spring hiring season and staffing season.
Thank you, Mr. Mons. Is this a resolution that we need to read into the record, or can it be written and submitted into the record?
I believe that this resolution can be written and submitted into the record.
Okay, so I know that the resolution is in our board packets. I am looking for a motion to approve the resolution and a second.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Ellison and a second by Ms. Thompson. Are there any discussions regarding the resolution? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote. Would ask the clerk to please read the role.
Newmaster.
Find my mic. Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcand.
Aye.
Bloyd.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Ellison, aye. Mullen.
Aye. Thank you. And the resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Mons. We will now move to our next operational item, E2, which is the action on the revised fiscal year '21 budget. Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board, Dr. Kazmicek. With me tonight, too, is our Director of Finance, Andy Johnson. Recall that at the January 25th board meeting, we reviewed the adjustments for the fiscal year '21 budget and previewed fiscal year '22 budget. We'll move on to one more slide. This budget cycle, one We'll move on to one more slide. This budget cycle, one more. This, uh, this budget cycle, uh, represents the work that's done throughout the year to develop the school district budget. In, right now, we're in January, February, where we look at mid-year budget adjustments and project our budget adjustment for the next fiscal year. Recall that last June, you approved the preliminary budget for FY21, the 2020-21 school year. At that point, our budget's based on a lot of assumptions. We're, uh, we're making assumptions about what we think our enrollment will be. And then assumptions about what would be the appropriate staffing and expenditure level, um, based on our enrollment assumptions. Then come January, February, when we have real numbers to, um, as opposed to assumptions, then it's time to make adjustments where we can and, and forecast what the preliminary budget will look like for the following year. So that's where we're at. Uh, we'll move ahead. Recalling that the primary, um, ingredient in a school district budget is, uh, enrollment. Enrollment determines to a large part what our revenues for the year will be. This chart shows our enrollment from fiscal year 2015, that's the 2014-15 school year, and then projects out to fiscal year 25, the 24-25 school year. And you can see if you follow the orange bars that you'll see our enrollment, uh, continue to build each year until we get to fiscal year 20, that, that was last year. And you can see that our enrollment leveled off. In fact, it actually dropped a little bit by the end of the year. Once the pandemic hit, we lost a number of students as the spring went on. And I think some families chose to homeschool their kids rather than do the distance learning model. When school, when the school, we'll go back, go back to that slide again. When the school year started, the 2021 school year started, we were about 200, well, 249 students less than we had the previous year. And about 325 then we budgeted for, for this year. Um, that's a significant loss in enrollment and a significant impact on our revenues. Now, if you follow the orange bars for the next four years, you'll see that we see those, uh, enrollment numbers continue to climb. Uh, not at a real fast rate, but we think we'll continue to see our enrollment increase over the next four years. Across the state, the expectation by the Senate Budget Analysts is that, um, enrollment will climb very slowly across the state. In fact, they, they predict that it'll be 2025 till as, as a state, we have enrollment numbers that are, uh, equal to our pre-pandemic levels. We think, uh, because of the construction on the north end of our district, that we should see our numbers begin to climb more quickly than some other areas of the state. The black bar there is a fairly conservative, um, projection of where we expected our enrollment to be pre-pandemic. And so we don't think that we will be back to our pre-pandemic expectations. That that's gonna take, uh, it's gonna take longer to recover to where we thought we would be. So as I said, that's the preliminary, or the, that's the primary ingredient in our, in our revenues. We'll go to the next slide. Okay, and this is very similar to what you saw in, uh, January 25th. But we've done some work on this. And now Andy Johnson has been working really hard on these numbers. We're fortunate to have Andy, who is a former auditor of public school districts and, uh, and has significant years of experience working as a Director of Finance. So Andy's gonna walk us through these numbers. Andy Johnson.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Um, so as Tim said, I'm gonna walk through these numbers, um, primarily this, tonight focusing on the fiscal 21 revised budget. Um, because that's what we're asking you to approve this evening. Um, but also just wanna point out that these, these summary numbers reflect the enrollment that Tim referenced on the, on the previous slide. So you can see that in the yellow column, um, this summarizes our fiscal 21, uh, revised budget. So fiscal 21 means the 2021 school year. On the fiscal 22 budget in orange reflects the enrollment decreases that, um, that Tim referenced and that we talked about it at the last meeting. So for fiscal 21 in summary, we're, we're looking at projected revenues of 123,115,000 and projected expenses of 122,955,000. So we're, we're projected to actually, um, come out just a little bit ahead this school year, uh, looking at a net increase in our fund balance of 160,000. Now, detailed, um, ex- uh, expense and, and revenue budgets are available in the packet for you, but just really hitting on some highlights, one is the special ed cross-subsidy continues to be a challenge for us. Um, we don't receive special ed aid, um, that matches expenses. So that's factored in. We have some one-time funding factored into the current budget related to CARES funding. So special, special federal aid that we received this year. So that's factored into revenues and expenditures. Um, and really just what we're seeing in general going, um, going forward is the effect of COVID in public schools. Um, so going forward, uh, one, present one more thing that is in addition to what we presented last, um, the, uh, their last meeting on January 25th. So in the, in the kind of middle section, you can see budget adjustment scenario A. This is what we had presented last time as, um, kind of a target for budget adjustments going forward. Um, so looking at the deficit for next year, we're looking at about 6.8 million dollars of deficit. And, um, we had previously shown that we would be presenting probably, uh, a target of six, of $4 million for next year budget adjustments, 2.6 million for fiscal 23, and 500,000 for fiscal 24. And as we, um, met and reviewed those targets, felt that, that, that doesn't quite move the needle as much as we feel like we should because we're not meeting our fund balance target. So wanted to present another, uh, target that we're gonna be working towards coming up in the future that we see at the bottom, where we're targeting 1% growth in fund balance year over year. So you can see that we are presenting here that we would be looking at $4 million of budget adjustments for fiscal 22, 3.6 million for fiscal 23, and then, um, 650,000 for fiscal 24. So you can see then right below that, that we would be growing our fund balance percentage from 6% to 7% to 8%. So working our way towards the fund balance policy of 12 and a half to 16.7%. Um, so that's really a summary of kind of what we're looking at going forward. Again, tonight, what we're asking you is to approve the, um, fiscal 21 revised budget that's presented.
Thank you very much. Uh, so you've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year, uh, the re-revised, uh, budget for fiscal year 21?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Dr. Arcand. Any questions, discussion items regarding the fiscal year 21 revised budget?
Chairman Mullen, uh, before we get into questions, I think there's one more slide here that's just gonna identify. No, that's okay. They, uh, just identify what our next steps in the process are.
Thank you, Mr. Walt.
Sure. Uh, we noted that, that what you pass in June will be the preliminary budget. So what we're showing you right now for FY22 is really a preliminary, preliminary budget. So what, we expect that what we bring you in June is gonna look a little different than what you're seeing tonight. So you're only acting on the FY21 adjustments. But as we looked, look forward FY22, we know that, uh, it's a legislative year and there'll be, um, decisions made at the legislative level that will impact school finance. Our projections to FY22 show no increase in, uh, the student formula at the state level. And so, um, that, there's a lot of decisions to be made, you know, at the state on this. And so we'll see how that, how that plays out here over the next few months at the state. But right now, we've been making presentations to all of our, at all of our buildings, uh, to our staff, just showing them kind of what, uh, how the next year's budget is shaping up and, and, uh, challenging them to share ideas they have on how the school district can be more efficient stewards of the resources that we have. And principals and supervisors are harvesting those ideas from their teams, meeting with their building leadership teams. Um, and we'll be looking for not only good ideas, but we'll also just be looking for themes of what people identify. They'll bring those back, um, to administration and on, uh, by February 18th. So on February 18th, we're asking principals and supervisors to submit those ideas to us. We'll take the next, uh, few days to cast those ideas out and what we think the savings of those ideas will be. And then we have a budget recommendation work team and cabinet will review those ideas. And we'll put together a recommendation for how we'll get to that $4 million adjustment for FY22. We'll meet with the Executive Finance Committee, uh, to review those recommendations on the 24th. And, uh, typically, we sharpen things up at that meeting. And then we plan to bring those recommendations to you for discussion on March 1st, the March 1st board meeting. And then we'd ask you to, um, approve those recommendations at the March 22nd board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Walt. Is that, is that it or is there more?
Yes, that is it.
I apologize again. So you, we've got a motion and a second. Uh, is there any discussion regarding the budget? I know that, uh, we went over this at length at the last, uh, at the, uh, January work study, uh, meeting. Are there any additional questions, uh, regarding the revised fiscal year 21 budget? Mr. Chapman.
Well, I think, uh, actually, Dr. Newman Master had her hand up first, so I will defer to her for right now.
Okay, Dr. Newman Master.
Thank you. My only question for this is harking back to our last discussion. And I know I brought up that the legislature and the meeting yes, last week, the Association of Metropolitan School Boards, the presentation there made it look as if it was very likely that at least our enrollment this year would be considered to be our pre-COVID enrollment. And I don't know if that's in stone yet, but it sounded like we were gonna go, be able to go across the state with our 2019 enrollment to, to plan what kind of monies, um, would come in for our student count. So I'm wondering, was that forecast included in this budget? Or because it hadn't maybe been signed into law, I don't know where it's at yet. Sounded like the, the people that were presenting thought it was going to be something we could pretty much count on.
Yeah, we're really optimistic, optimistic about that, but, uh, we didn't build it into the budget at this point. Uh, so hopefully that will be in there when we come back to you in Mar- in May to review the, uh, preliminary budget. That we'll have good news from the legislature. We, we just don't trust it yet. At the end of February, there'll be a new budget forecast, state budget forecast. And I think that's gonna inform us, uh, to a great degree, what kind of mood the legislature will be in, what they're able to do as they move forward in their work. And as you, you know, too, Dr. Newman Master, this, the governor has, uh, proposed a 1% increase in the for, in the student formula. And so that also is not included in the budget. So we, we factored in zero increase in the formula. So we're hopeful for that too.
Thank you, Mr. Walt. Dr. Newman Master, does that answer your question?
Well, it lets me know that the, the final version could be more optimistic.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman, did you have a question?
Uh, Mr. Walt and Ms. Johnson, um, if you could just, uh, summarize again, uh, what the, uh, increase, about $6 million increase is in expenditures from fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 22. In looking at, uh, the, uh, supplemental information that was in the packet, it looks like the vast majority of that is under, uh, what's called sites and buildings or something like that. Could you, uh, explain exactly, uh, or give somewhat of a summary as to what, what's included in there?
Yep, I'd be happy to. So you are correct. The largest reason for that increase is related to our LTFM, which is long-term facility maintenance revenue. So that's, um, revenue that's available to us specifically to tackle some of our building projects. So you do see that increase in the sites and maintenance, um, area. Um, so that's about 6 million, 6,115,000 dollars. So it's a corresponding revenue increase and expenditure increase.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, is there, are there any other questions regarding the revised budget?
Uh, Chairman Mullen, just a clarification. What we're voting on right now is the 2021 budget. So that would be the, what's in the yellow, and we're not voting on any of the other projections.
Yes, sir, that is correct. We are voting on the fiscal year 21 revised budget, uh, which is in the yellow. Other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing or seeing none, I would ask the clerk to, oh, Ms. Thompson, did you have a question?
I do have a question, I guess. Um, in looking at that supplemental, uh, work that we were given, I'm just wondering, in some of the categories, we have, we have decreased the salary, but increased the employee benefits category. And then in others where we, um, we decrease the salary, we also decreased employee benefits. And I'm just trying to figure out why it, you know, it, it doesn't follow suit with every category that, of instruction or staffing that we have. So I'm just wondering if there's, you know, reason, you know, what the deal is with that.
Sure, I can explain that. So as Ti- as Tim said, kind of right at the beginning, in June, the budget is set based on a lot of assumptions. So at that time, um, you kind of take a broad, broad stroke of, we're gonna estimate X percent increase on our salaries and benefits. And then what we do is, once the school year gets going, we take a look at the actual staff that we have in seats. And we, um, kind of fine-tooth comb the budget based on their actual salary. So it's not so much of a, an assumption of what we think they're going to be making or just a blanket increase. Uh, so we look at actually how much they're actually, um, being compensated and, and the benefit packages that they're, um, enrolled in. And then also what you might run into sometimes is, um, we may have kind of revised their coding. So we might have looked at a position and said, well, this was coded in this way, but really it fits in a different, um, a different funding stream better. So you're kind of seeing a combination of, of refinement, I would say, in those areas.
You could have employees retire and you hire employees who cost you less. And perhaps the retiring employee wasn't accessing the healthcare benefit, but the employee you hire is. And so you might see in that scenario, you'd see an increase in benefits and a decrease in salary.
Great, thank you. And that's kind of what I thought. Yeah, I kind of figured that's what it was, but thanks for explaining it.
Okay, other questions, comments?
Chairman Mullen, this is Deb. I have a question.
Ms. Floyd.
So overall, though, we've seen a net decrease in what we're having to use for, um, or what we're having to pay out for, um, medical because of COVID. Are we, without looking at the numbers specifically, we're assuming an increase in the next budget, correct? Since there's probably a lot of people putting stuff off.
Yeah, we actually saw a pretty significant, um, spend rate in December. And so when we go back through spring and summer, each month, the percentage of expected, um, medical expenses increases. And December was pretty significant. And so we, we're gonna end the year as we're, as we do our end of year spend out now. We're gonna end in a pretty good place, uh, but we'll see. Um, we may see, it, there's, it's really projection. And we may see some elective surgeries that were put on hold. Um, you know, that, that happened in 2022. So, yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't surprise us if our expenses go up.
Yeah, that would be my assumption as well.
If I could just hop really quickly there, I'd also just note that when, uh, we recommended the rate increases for this year, when we set the rates, we did not set, we set the rates with that in mind. And so, um, we didn't take as low a rate, um, change as we could have with that, with that very concept in mind.
Okay, thank you.
And maybe you could clarify, too, either Tim or Andy, that that particular fund is not represented and what's being acted upon tonight. So this, I don't know, you want to talk about the service, the internal service account, maybe Andy, and how that works?
Sure. So we are self-funded for health insurance, and so that activity flows through what we call an internal service fund. So the, kind of, we pay ourselves essentially for that employee benefit, and then we go ahead and remit payment then to our insurance company from that fund. What you see reflected in the budget presented to you is our cost for employee benefits. So the actual premiums that we essentially, again, pay to ourselves, that cost is reflected in here. And that cost is based on the actual premium amounts that are set. So we may have some fluctuations in the usage of the premium. That will get reflected basically in the following year, because once your rates are set, they're set for the year, and you don't adjust it based on usage throughout the year. Does that help? Any follow-up questions to that?
Okay, are there any other questions regarding the fiscal year revised budget? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote, and would ask the clerk to please read the roll.
New Master.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcand.
Aye.
Bellloyd.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Ellison, aye, Mullen.
Aye. And we have a, we've adopted the revised budget. Thank you all very much. We will now move to our next operational item, E3, which is the action on the acceptance of the Brochus Grants. Dr. Kazmercheck.
All right, thank you, Chair Mullen. The White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation has forwarded seven additional Brochus teaching grants to me with the request that these grants be formally accepted by the school board. As part of their internal process, prior to consideration of any proposal, the foundation reviews the proposal with our administration, and then we confirm that the proposals are consistent with our curriculum and if technology is used consistent with our technology plan. So the recommended action is that we accept the seven additional Brochus teaching grants from the White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation, as shown in the board packets, in the total amount of $14,180.89.
You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to accept the grants?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Arcand. Are there any questions or comments regarding the acceptance of the Brochus Grants? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote, and would ask the clerk to please read the roll.
New Master.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcand.
Aye.
Bellloyd.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Ellison, aye, Mullen.
Aye. And the grants are accepted. Thank you all very much. We will now move to our last operational item, E4, which is the action on school board policies. Up for their second reading, Policy 401, which is the equal employment opportunity. Policy 407, which is the employee's right to know. Policy 409, which is the employee publication. Policy 497, which is nepotism. Policy 499, student teaching. Policy 519, interviews of students by outside agencies. Policy 529, staff notification of violent behavior by students. Policy 599, academic. And Policy 609, religion. Is there a motion to adopt these policies for the second reading?
So moved.
There's been a motion by Ms. Ellison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. Is there any discussion regarding the policies for their second reading? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote, but ask the clerk to please read the roll.
New Master.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcand.
Aye.
Bellloyd.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Ellison, aye, Mullen.
Aye. And those policies are adopted and in the record. We are now at the point of our meeting that it is Board Forum. Is there any board members that have anything for Board Forum?
Chair Mullen, if I could.
Ms. Ellison.
I think I'm the only school board member that has elementary students. I think that's accurate. And so I just wanted to share that my three elementary kids are back in person in the buildings, and they are thrilled, and I want to give a huge shout out to all of the teachers and staff and all the work that our elementary folks have been doing. And they are, from what I've heard, the teachers are happy to have them back as well. So thank you to everybody for all of your work to get our littles back in the building.
Thank you, Ms. Ellison. Anybody else have anything for Board Forum?
Chair Mullen.
Dr. Arcand.
I just would like to invite any board member, any staff that would be interested to attend the Ramsey County League of Local Governments presentation on Friday, February 12th, from 7:30 to 9:00. We're going to be having a discussion with the Ramsey County State Legislature with a focus on mental health. It'll kind of give you an understanding, some of the things we're trying to do with the organization to support our community. And if you'd like a link, I can send the link out to you so that you can register for that session.
Dr. Arcand, I would ask you to please pass the link on to Dr. Kazmercheck, and then he could forward it out to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything under Board Forum?
This is Marge.
Dr. Newmaster.
Just briefly, I want to second Jessica's enthusiasm and say that I've spoken to the elementary student who skipped his way back on my court. And I know I'd want to salute everybody involved in making this possible, and the parents and students for transitioning happily again. So it's good to see. But thank you to everybody involved.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? I just want to remind everybody that I know it feels like it's spring and it's coming soon, but please stay warm and stay bundled up. It's a little chilly out there, and it's going to get a little chilly through the weekend. So just enough that I need to remind anybody of that, but I was just to want to make sure that I say, please stay warm and stay inside if you possibly can do so. With that, it is now time to, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chair Mullen, I motion to adjourn.
I will second that, and we'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
New Master.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcand.
Aye.
Bellloyd.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Ellison, aye, Mullen.
Aye. And we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Be safe.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody. Good night.